Okay, I'd like to call to order this public work session of the Mawa Board of Education for March 13th, 2019. Would you please take roll call?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Dr. Morthee.
Here.
Mr. Wendrickowitz. Ms. DeCoe. Mr. DeSilva. Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Mr. Kizmarski.
Here.
Ms. Conoco. And Ms. Baron.
Here.
Adequate notice of agenda, this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on March 13th, 2019, in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Dr. Morthee, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion to recess to executive on Mr. Wendrickowitz, second by Mr. Kizmarski? Thank you, sorry. Yes, motion to reconvene, Mr. Kizmarski, second by Mr. Wendrickowitz. Thank you. Okay. May I have a motion to take action on my discussing executive session?
Sure.
Agenda questions, okay. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you were referring to in your question. May I have a motion to open this meeting to the public? Mr. Gallo, second by Dr. Morthee. One? Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to close to the public? Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Kizmarski. Got it? Ms. Dr. Schoen, do you have anything for us this evening?
I do, I do. A couple of things. Just a reminder about parent academies that we have coming up. We have what every sports parent needs to know taking place on April 3rd. That was rescheduled because of snow. And we also have vaping and E-SIGs presentation that's taking place on March 13th, which is right now. Mike? Mike? Is this taking place right now as I'm?
That's the registration date.
Okay, let me review that. Let me go back. When is this taking place? Oh, March 18th. I'm so sorry. Thank you, I didn't read the flyer right. Next time, maybe you should do this, Mike, or you, Prima, because apparently I blew that. Okay. March 18th. And finally, just a reminder and kind of give you a, not a heads up, but rather where we're at at this point in regard to our one-to-one initiative. If you recall back a couple of meetings ago, the board approved a three-year lease agreement for new laptop computers, grade six through 12, for both all of our students and all of our teachers in grade six through 12. The laptop program that will be initiated at the high school is similar to what's occurring now. It's called a modified one-to-one. That means there will be a computer for every student, but they will remain in school on carts and stay here. Whereas the high school will have a computer for every student that will travel with them to and from school, they're welcome to bring that home and to do all of that. The important component of that is, is that the laptops are currently being built in the process of being shipped, and they do that in different shipments. We have developed, Dr. Dittoro, myself, Mr. Rosa, our director, Ms. DeVito, our supervisor, and John Pascal certainly, an information booklet that we will talk about probably in April or May, and it has a lot of those frequently asked question pieces in it, which will help parents with questions like, what happens if my student forgets the computer? What happens if they drop it? What does the insurance look like? So I just, I bring that up, and I think it's important to do publicly as people do view this video along the way, just as a reminder for those parents who are saying, hey, listen, my kid's laptop is going to need to be replaced. If they are going into high school, maybe they can hold off until September because their student will have one. So more updates to come, but it is an important initiative for the district, and I wanted to bring you up to date.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. Mr. Bleeker?
Um, yes, to do a report on this evening, a presentation regarding the preliminary budget that's on tonight's agenda.
Want me to turn some lights on?
Um, sure, thank you. Just one more. Okay. All right, so, good evening, guys. In past years, we are going to do a presentation on the budget in a couple of different stages. Tonight's presentation is going to be the first. One of the items on tonight's agenda is the adoption of the preliminary budget. To refresh everybody from last year, who are those that may not have been here, the process is as follows. We're going to approve a preliminary budget this evening. This preliminary budget is then going to go down to the county office. County office is going to review it. They're going to have their time to take a look at it, see if there's any comments or anything that they have regarding it. That'll come back to us. We then incorporate those comments, and at our May 1st meeting is when we will have the final adoption of the 1920 budget. So this is just the first step in a couple-week process as far as getting it approved. However, I do have to say this process started well before. Before I get started, just a thank you to the Finance and Facilities Committee. We've met, I believe, four times in total regarding the preliminary budget, each time taking a look at different sections of the budget, as well as preliminary time before that in developing it with district administration. So this evening, I'm going to discuss just some of the different revenue sources for the budget, as well as speak to the tax impact for the tax. So revenue sources, the, there are five main primary revenue sources that I can develop and see in the budget. The first one and the largest component of which is the tax levy. Tax levy for next year, and this is combined with both the operating account and the debt service account, which is a separate tax levy associated with both. It's $65 million, $65,110,000. We also have state aid, that is a portion of the budget. This state aid, we just, was released last week. We do have a slight increase from last year, from the 18-19 year, so this is $3,127,436 is our increase in state aid. Other revenues, which is comprised of interest, mis-sense revenue, grants, income, et cetera, approximately $238,000. The next significant component is the fund outs. Fund outs are funds that we have already received in other budget years. This comes from the 17-18 budget year, as well as the current 18-19 budget year. Funds that we have, we will be bringing forward to the 1920 budget. And then the final piece is the grants and both state and federal grants, as well as non-public grants that we receive. That amount is $718,000. These grants, federal money that comes from other sources, local money, state money, we need to use for dedicated, specific purposes, which is why they're shown separately. As I said before, tax information, so we have several different factors that go into what the tax impact for the district or for the community is going to be. One of the primary drivers is the top figure, which is the net value taxable for both the, for the 2019 year. We have 2018 year there as well as a comparison, and want to show that because the overall value of the district, and this is information that comes from the tax assessor's office, the overall value of the district has gone up by approximately $60 million. Increase in that tax base does benefit us by having a larger tax base to spread across the tax levy over. The average value of a home in Mawa, again, information that I received, thanks to the township assessor's office, has gone up slightly from 2018 to 2019, $475,988 to a current When you factor these numbers with the tax levy that I spoke about on the slide previous, the 2018 school year tax for every $100,000, and my fault, I should say 2019 school tax, sorry about that. The 2019 school tax anticipated for every $100,000 is going to be approximately $1,113, which is an increase of $17 from the prior year. On the average value of a home, listen to give another comparison, $100,000 is a $17 increase. A $500,000 home would have approximately $85 increase for the year.
Which is lower than last year.
Yes, it is lower than last year. Last year, if I'm not mistaken, was a $19, $18, $18 increase.
Exactly.
Ben asked this question in committee, that's why. The amount would have was last year.
Individual 22 cents.
$18.60.
So, to conclude, this is going to be our budget calendar, as I said, this is going to be the first of several budgets, several presentations I'm going to do. Rather than one large presentation, we're going to break it up into a few different pieces. So tonight, as I had gone through, instead of the beginning, we discussed the preliminary budget, the revenue source and the tax impact, and the process of the preliminary budget, and how it's going to flow through the county for the next few weeks. At our next meeting, I'm going to speak about debt service, special revenue, and special education components in the budget. April 10th, we'll have a review, overview of benefits, personnel, and other operations within the budget. And then May 1st, as I had said before, will be our final adoption of the 1920 budget. And that is this evening's presentation. Any questions from the board?
Thank you very much. Sean.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Mr. Fair, do you have an assistant superintendent's report for us?
Yes, I have a short report. Just wanted to let everyone know that we are starting our filming of our staff highlights. We hope to showcase those six staff members either at the April meeting or the May 1st meeting. We'll have to figure out how that's organized. And we are starting our preparation on our end-of-year barbecue. We are creating a committee that's consistent of a staff member from each building, and hopefully that will be a huge hit. That's it.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I just want to report that The Little Mermaid had their senior citizens' performance today, and that show will be presented this weekend, Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights at 7:00 PM, and Sunday at 2:00. And then next week, Ramapo Ridge is going to be presenting Aladdin Jr. So mark that on your calendars. And then I would like to read a statement on behalf of the Board of Education. "The open microphone at Board of Education meetings is not the forum to directly critique staff members, but rather an opportunity to comment on old or new Board of Education business. While First Amendment rights always exist, this forum is not the correct venue to express discontent towards specific and named employees. The Board of Education, in its capacity, and in particular, a Board of Education meeting, is not the proper channel to deal with, communicate, or seek absolute remedy related to such matters. Student and staff confidentiality is taken seriously, and concerns must be directed toward the proper authority responsible for resolution. The district works best in the use of the chain of command that governs our day-to-day decision-making. The chain of command acknowledges the need to solve issues at the lowest level, which also does not discourage parents from expressing their upset or from seeking resolution. While it does afford parents the opportunity to bring issues past the teacher, to the immediate supervisor, or principal, and ultimately to our central office administrators, this type of communication is best when rooted in reason, common courtesy, and civility. The Board of Education is charged with ensuring efficiency of the district and adherence to policy and procedure. We support the equal right to a positive, safe, and enriching experience for all our students and staff." Thank you very much. And that is my report for this evening. Board committee reports. Do you have any board committee reports this evening? Mr. Gallo.
I want to thank Kyle first on the budget presentation and all the effort of the Finance and Facilities Committee over the last few months, working with Kyle to come up with a budget that funds several new initiatives, including the one-to-one initiative and some minor staff increases to support special need students in our district. It was a productive effort together with the board and administration, and I think the taxpayers are getting good value for their money. On negotiations, we had a negotiations meeting just prior to this meeting with the MEA. We have made very substantial progress on many of the contractual items that govern the terms of employment with our employees, and we are moving into another phase of negotiation process next, excuse me, Wednesday. In the words of some of the negotiations members, we are trending up.
Thank you. It's Dr. Morthee.
I have a report on instruction and curriculum. We had a jam-packed meeting, our last meeting, so we have several things to share, and Dr. Dittoro, please jump in if there's anything you need to clarify. One thing we discussed is adoption of a new curriculum. This is going to be related to a reading program, K through 5. The current program is called Words Their Way. That is being utilized. The feedback from teachers had been that this program had been insufficient in some ways, that they needed to supplement instruction, and there was a need for reading help and assistance when kids reach JK. So they felt that there was something to look at. Under the direction of Dr. Dittoro and Jennifer Glabacki. Did I get it right? Okay. People used to kill my name for years, so I'm glad. Teachers, resource teachers and reading specialists, and people from the child study team, they met and really looked at the different curriculum that's out there, and it's under their recommendation that they believe this is the new program that should be used. They highlighted some of the benefits that they thought of this program. Whole group instruction was one, having routines and reviews that carry across K through 5, clear scope and sequence, multi-sensory approach, which is very important, an online component, and an online teacher professional development and support component. They spoke about the fact that they're already hoping to have, and they're planning to have professional development for teachers, K through 5, the end of this year, and then again at the beginning of next year. So again, thank you for reviewing and enhancing and thinking about students and the importance of their reading, literacy, and all of that in this district. If you have anything else to add, feel free.
That was a perfect answer.
So I'll continue. The other thing that.
I'm just, I'm sorry.
You have, you have.
Uh-oh.
No, no. No, go ahead, go ahead.
So, one of the things that impressed me was, one of the things that we do so well in this district that we should be very proud of is the participation of all levels of staff in these types of programs. And in the materials that we provided, there was a list of, I'm going to guess about 18, 20 people from all school buildings who are going to be affected, administrators, faculty members, and everybody had contributed to the solution essentially. And the number of resources they looked at was very broad, but through diligence and through teamwork and a resolution to conflicting ideas, they came up with a recommendation that was, you know, very solid for the district and should be very good for us.
Yeah, I think, I mean, very well thought out and very collaborative. So we thank you.
Very collaborative, exactly.
Number two, Maureen Lynch came to present to us about the fact that they're having an addition of a graphic novels unit in the sixth-grade reading program. The idea is really graphic novels can sometimes engage kids. These are not just cartoons like we were used to, but these are really, I mean, to see some of these graphic novels, the drawings, but also how the words go with them, they convey meanings sometimes that you don't get just from the written word. And also for struggling readers, that this might be a way to draw kids in versus just reading sort of rote. She's talked about they would end with a cumulative activity for this unit, and they would have to design a Google website perhaps, or write and draw their own autobiography, which was very interesting. The other thing was the themes of some of the graphic novels had a lot to do with kids, you know, who were excluded, or kids who might be bullied for different reasons. There was one book called Defo, and that was one of the ones that is going to be a required reading. But again, how, you know, we can accept differences and appreciate that. So I thought that theme was very good as well. She said students were very excited about it and very encouraged, so I think that's a nice addition. There was also discussion of college essay writing, and the fact that we need to consider perhaps increasing some resources for students, that there is a crush right around November 1st, when all the, you know, applications are due, and so there was a suggestion of maybe having teachers stay for extra help after school, perhaps a writing lab, doing maybe some more boot camps, et cetera. The last thing that we spoke about, we had an update on social emotional learning, and there's been this very strong initiative in our district on mindfulness and the mindfulness approach and how to apply that academically and to help students as well. So with the mindfulness approach, over 100 teachers have been trained actually in our district in mindfulness, and this was actually started thanks to the Mawa Schools Foundation, grant money, which they helped pilot, and then luckily, the board, we've also then adopted some pieces, which is.
They did it twice, though.
Yeah, and they've done it twice. They did it twice, which is how it's supposed to work, which is great. Some things in terms of how they've incorporated mindfulness. At the high school, the movement started with community problem solving, the community problem solving group to help sort of with reduction of stress. Now there's three classes in mindfulness, and 75 students are taking part in the mindfulness coursework. They also included in the announcements there, it's about gratitude, habits of the mind, things like that. At Ramapo Ridge, they have Mindful Monday announcements, and they're also using this theme during their advisory, highlighting again kindness and gratitude. JK, there's a whole school experience at JK, it's every Monday before school starts, and then the social worker has been working with teaching kids one time a month by going into classrooms. Elementary school, it's called responsive classroom, and this is, again, how to navigate sort of social issues or anxieties, et cetera, within the classroom using mindfulness techniques. So again, a lot going on in the district, and all really wonderful stuff. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Curriculum, my favorite committee.
See, I had to say something. You can last, but.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Any other committee reports?
I put in front of the board members, Steve Burge's latest budget proposal regarding health benefits. It's just his proposal, it's nothing written in stone here, but you get some idea where he wants to go.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gallo, would you mind giving a brief update on the playground situation for us?
So Kyle, the presentation Kyle made was essentially on the operating portion of our budget. We also have a capital portion of our budget. And this year, as part of our superintendent's goals, she has a goal to produce, to develop a long-range capital plan for the district. So instead of deciding on some of the capital programs in, as part of our operating process, we're deferring the capital budget process until Dr. Schoen completes the capital planning process, so we can have a overall holistic look at the district's capital needs. Specifically on the playgrounds, in the playground, the cost of upgrading the playgrounds is outside of the bounds of our operating budget, so therefore it is a capital item, and it will be considered as part of our capital plan review. About as much as I can say.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, do you have any other remarks, her comments, on any non-agenda items from any board members? Is that very good to do? I have a motion to proceed on old business. Mr. Wendrickowitz, second by Dr. Morthee. Any comments, statements on any of these items? It was good. Okay, would you please take roll call?
Yes. Dr. Morthee.
Yes.
Mr. Wendrickowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski.
Yes.
Ms. Baron.
Yes. I have a motion to proceed on 17A through AA. Mr. Wendrickowitz, second by Mr. Gallo.
May I ask, should we break out 17J regarding the preliminary budget? It's very important, 17 million dollars.
J. Fine, so we will do 17A through AA, leaving out J for the moment, and we will vote on that at the end. Thank you. We have a motion to proceed.
Yeah, we had a motion by Mr. Wendrickowitz and second by Mr. Gallo.
Yes, please.
Roll call for 17A through AA, excluding 17J. Dr. Morthee.
Yes.
Mr. Wendrickowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes, except on 17A, I will be abstaining from check number 094226.
Thank you. Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski.
Yes.
And Ms. Baron.
Yes. I have a motion to proceed on 17J. Mr. Wendrickowitz, second by Mr. Copeland.
Dr. Morthee.
Yes.
Mr. Wendrickowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski.
Yes.
And Ms. Baron.
Yes. Now, I have new business, 18, I'd like to take 18A through J. May I have a motion to proceed on that? Dr. Morthee, second by Mr. Wendrickowitz. Do you have any questions, comments on any of the items? Would you please take roll call?
Of course. Dr. Morthee.
Yes.
Mr. Wendrickowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski.
Yes.
And Ms. Baron.
Yes. Public questions or comments? This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. May I have a motion to open the meeting to the public? Mr. Copeland, second by Dr. Morthee.
Hi, my name's Anne Powley. I live at 86 West Crescent Avenue. Real quick, I just want to say I'm so excited to hear El Defo will be part of a curriculum. My youngest is hearing impaired. I've given that book to his brother, his sister, a bunch of his teachers, and it's really helped people understand where he's coming from.
I'm sorry, I guess I said Defo, not El.
El Defo.
Thank you for clarifying.
Kudos.
Appreciate it.
So I'm here also related to my youngest about the playgrounds. I've sent information to all of you. I don't know how much I should go into in the public portion about my concerns about the health aspects of the kids playing on chopped-up tires. Originally, I had started to look into alternative surfaces because the playground was really just gross. My kid would come home like black from head to toe. My older two weren't as energetic as him. But as I started to look at alternative surfaces, I saw that the state of Connecticut was actually looking to ban rubber mulch. I think we've all been familiar with the turf, artificial turf issues that have been raised. This is the same material. I know right now it has not been established by the EPA that it's not safe, but it has also not been established that it is safe. And the more research I do, the more I'm convinced that it will be outlawed eventually, but everything has stalled right now. There was supposed to be a study in 2016. Very little has happened. I keep writing to the EPA. I get no response. And now it's, another study was released in 2018 by the Consumer Product Safety Commission. Now, they're supposed to regulate things that come in contact with children. Anything for kids under the age of 14 is supposed to be lead-free. The rubber mulch that comes from tires does contain lead. It's just not regulated as a product for children. So there's a lot of loopholes here that have allowed this to be on our playgrounds. So you know my concerns. I heard Mr. Gallo's presentation, but I don't really speak port of ed, so I don't know.
Wow. Yeah, so I don't, I don't really know what that means.
What it means is. I'm going to give you the cliff note version. I have a number of goals that I need to reach each year, and one of the goals that the board wanted me to put together is a long-range capital improvement plan, because as Mr. Gallo explained, we cannot purchase a new playground out of our operating budget, it must be out of a capital project. You had shared a great deal of information with me, I had shared a great deal of information with the Facilities Committee, right, as I told you that I would. So I have almost completed that list, and what that list is, is a list that talks about those capital projects that we've done in our district over the last probably six, seven, eight years, and those that we're recommending moving forward. It will be the job of all of us to sit together, take a look at that list, and redoing the playground at GW is one of those capital projects that is on that list. What we have to now determine is what the priorities are, right? Because not only is it the playground by GW, it is the playgrounds of our other schools. In what order do we do that? And is that one that's going to reach the top of the? And is that one that's going to reach the top of the priority list, or are there others that will? And that is a determination of the facilities committee. So what Mr. Gallo is saying is, is we'll review that list, and we'll make that determination. We've decided not to do that in the initial part of the budget process so that I could complete the list and we could...
So this will be by the April adoption of the budget? Is that your timeline?
Yeah, so what Kyle presented was the operating portion of the budget. That's raised directly by taxes. Then we have a capital budget, sometimes it's paid forward through our capital reserve fund. In other districts, if they're, you know, you're building a school, you raise a bond, you build the school. We've basically been using our capital reserve money to do capital projects of this nature. And as Dr. Schoen points out, there's a fairly significant list of capital needs that...
What's your timeframe in address, presenting the capital needs budget?
I believe Dr. Schoen's goal is at the end of the year.
I've shared the list already with the...
Yeah, we have a draft.
They have a draft copy of the list, so we need to schedule a meeting. We're set to do that on March twenty-seventh, right? We're going to get together, look at that, do what it is that we need to do. So if you're looking for an end date, what date do we have to adopt the budget on?
Uh, May first.
May first.
Right, but the capital budget doesn't follow that schedule.
Right, so when do you, I guess then the question is to the facilities committee.
So what we're envisioning is, so on the twenty-seventh, what we're really looking at in the draft is sort of the methodology Dr. Schoen's and the scope of what she's looked at so far. I can tell you in the draft, there are playground improvements in the draft, but I think the completion of your goal is at the end of June, right?
The completion of the goal is the end of June. I think Ms. Powley is not interested in my goal, she's interested in the playground.
I would assume the completion of the goal is when it's complete.
Yeah.
So if she's done tomorrow, it's done.
It's done. But whenever Dr. Schoen, when that list is finalized, that's when the decision-making process, the analysis and decision-making process will start. So I would assume over the course of the summer, we're going to probably deal with most of the items that could be funded out of capital reserve, projects such as this, and whatever projects that may exceed that, depending on where they are sequence-wise year, because we're looking ten years down the road essentially, is, you know, that'll be the summertime project, basically.
So do we believe Ms. Powley will have some kind of information by June? As to what we're doing with capital projects? I think that's what you're...
June for possible...
Decisions.
Construction work to happen over summer? Okay. So basically, you're saying there's no chance that any of this is going to be addressed before the next school year? My kids are going to go in September to a rubber mulch playground.
Is this a project that we could do during while schools open? I don't see why not, right?
So it is a project of significant...
Just trying to understand the process.
In terms of dollar value, it will be a project that we would have to bid out, so there would be a bidding process and a word process, and the actual work to be done if this project were to make it that far.
I think Ms. Powley by June will have a good understanding of what summer projects, capital-wise, the facilities committee is interested in moving forward on. So if you're looking for an end date, I would probably say by June, if you were to come back to a board meeting if nothing is said publicly before that. I think the facilities committee should have a pretty good idea, because if it's going to be bid out, this or any other project, we're going to have to start that process at the end of May and June. As to whether or not it can be completed during the school year, my concern is that kids need to be able to play in the interim, and who's going to be out there doing outdoor work, and it's still nice outside, but we'd have to go through those details. So the answer to your question is, I would say by June.
Yeah, and I just visited all the playgrounds the other day, and Winter's Park as well, and that rubber is messy, but it is very cushiony. I mean, it is...
Did you try to jump on the rubber?
I did.
Like, okay.
But, and the thing that struck me is...
You didn't invite us to try.
One of the things, two things hit me, is one is, I sort of felt, you know, when I went to the Betsy Ross Playground, I thought, oh my God, my kids, they used to play here, and now they're out of college. And, but the playgrounds used to be smaller, and now, like, the one at GW is like the sprawling thing over there. It's like the big one, then another little one over there.
You're not answering her question.
No, but I...
Well, it does get to the issue that...
We are taking your project seriously.
Right.
It's on, in the draft list so far. Decisions will be made in the next few months.
So June is hard to hear. It does get to the point that we haven't even established the actual age of these playgrounds in our, in our conversations over the last year and a half.
In part of Dr. Schoen's work, she's listed...
You know the dates that they were installed?
Not the date, date, but the year.
The year that they were installed, okay, so I didn't know that. Is GW still the oldest? That's what I was led to believe, that it's over twenty years. And I also, I don't think we ever, I ever saw the material safety data sheet, which I would be very curious to see. Is that something that can be...
We should have that information as our playgrounds are inspected, they must by law. So Kyle, if you would be kind enough to provide...
Again, they can't speak to things that aren't regulated, they can't speak to lead content levels. And I would say when the, when the grounds are remediated, you might really want to consider doing some soil testing because of the contaminants in the tires is known to leach into the soil as well. So that might be a factor to consider.
It certainly may be a consideration when the board decides how they want to proceed with this.
According to the draft report, Playground One at GW was installed in nineteen ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight, okay, I thought it was ninety-six. And I also know, I feel like you've only heard from me, I want to say out of respect to the board, I have deliberately kept my concerns off of social media, and I wanted to make a commitment to do that, but I also feel like I need to find a way to let you know that the parents at the playground talk about this nonstop, they have been for ten years. I hear parents I don't even know tell their kids, get that out of your mouth, don't touch that, that's toxic. I hear the mom that says she doesn't even let her kids play on it in the summer because the smell coming off it gives her a headache. So I guess I'd like to find a way to get more of those voices in here.
We're hearing them, aren't we?
Hopefully without having...
I brought this up before the board before this show.
Okay. It's not, I'm just not the lone crazy wolf.
No, 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 we're not suggesting that at all.
And I dug up the photo that you took two years ago of your son with the black...
Yeah, it's been a year and a half since we started, you know, this conversation, yeah. Yeah, so he's getting a little better with that, but not a lot. So thank you for having him on your list. I'll continue to send you research.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else?
David May, ninety-three Owena Road. Haven't been able to attend the last two meetings, so I wanted to take this time to congratulate Mr. Copeland. I don't know much about you, but I hope to learn more about you over the time that you serve. Also, I wanted to bring up something I brought up previously about potential cameras on the outsides of the buses to catch the culprits that drive past. And then also, I know there's a bill floating around for the state regarding later start times for schools, and I was wondering if we're looking into that, because I think it's necessary.
So do a lot of high school students.
I think even below high school.
We have, we have not sat down as a central office staff, and more so with Mr. Pascal to even make that consideration. What they're looking to do is to pilot a program.
Do we want to volunteer for that?
So you're putting me on the spot here.
No, no, just thinking out loud.
Especially a zero period.
You're putting me on the spot here. Sorry. We have not considered it at this point, we have not spoken to Mr. Pascal. I would never make that decision immolaterally, and I would never do it without...
Just want to know if it's on the radar.
It's on our radar because it is being discussed out there, and we do have a high school. So the answer to that is yes, we are both aware of it, but we haven't sat down and discussed it officially.
Did Carly put you to that question?
No, 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 no. I've been saying it since Tori.
The problem is, is that there are a lot more ramifications than just changing the start time at the high school, because our buses all work off of each other, and we have six buildings. So the implication on transportation is great and costly. So we need to weigh the pros of considering an hour later to, to what that's going to do to affect our entire district. It's not a decision that can be made in isolation. It's not an easy one.
And it's also the coordination of after-school activities where we're visiting Ramsey for a basketball game.
And they finish at a certain time, and we're used to traveling, so it would, it would take a lot to take a look at.
There are some logistical challenges.
And I didn't see anything in that consideration about funding to help us do that.
No, no, I didn't see that either. They don't like to talk about that.
But we are aware of it.